Okay. Good morning. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, September 7th, 2016. We're here at Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street Northeast. If you'll join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to point out that the other Commissioner only has to be away one week and then he gets trained to do it abroad, really.
Is that what it is? Yes. Commissioner Carlson helped me work on the details while you were gone so that you'd be happy when you return.
You were almost perfect, except you didn't mention the center hearing room, but that's just kind of a...
It's not on the agenda.
I know it's an additional, to be perfect.
Oh dear. We are so big.
But see, I probably would have called it the Commissioner's Ballroom instead of the Commissioner's Boardroom, something like that. So, well, it's great, great to have you back and I hope you enjoyed your little deserved time off. For public comment this morning, we have Ken. Ken, I never can pronounce your last name. Is it Holstead? Holstead?
Hetzel.
Hetzel.
Hetzel, yes, sir.
Hetzel. Good to see you this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Hetzel. I live at 745 Harris Street here in Salem. And I came today to invite you and the people from Salem to come to our Hands Across the Bridge. It's a celebration of recovery this Friday afternoon at Marion Square Park. Personally, I've been in recovery for 20 years now. Back in Memphis, Tennessee, I've been in jail for drugs, been in the state mental hospital twice for depression, been homeless, been in the VA homeless shelter. I've been here in Salem, Oregon for eight years now. And I'm on the Board of ROC, R-O-C-C, Recovery Outreach Community Center at 1154 Madison Avenue. And we're a storefront, open-door entry point for homeless people, people on drugs and alcohol, mental illness that want to get better. And you can get better. It's a long road. It's a lifetime. I enjoy being better. It's better than being homeless and camping out in the woods. So I just want you all to come and enjoy it, share with us. I want to reach out to Rod since he's here. I've been meeting for the last two years with Don Cottrell of Marion County Mental Health, and we've started a Marion-Poke Peer Coalition that all the peer consumer ran organizations are working together. They'll be there, ROC, Project Able, Hope, Marion County, their groups, DDA, Mental Health America of Oregon, so on and so forth. So I just come to tell you about it and invite you to come see us.
Ken, thank you. Thanks for sharing this with us, but thank you for all the areas you serve in Marion County and Polk County as well. It's a real honor to have you come and serve in different ways. We don't need to go into all those, but I know I see you everywhere. It seems like everywhere I go, you're there, helping somebody, serving in some way. So thank you very much and the encouragement you are to us as well as to those that still need to be lifted up. So thank you very much for being here and what you do.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. We'll move right into the very long consent calendar. I'm not sure it's as long as the one we had last week.
Hmm. I feel like I should drag this out a little bit, but Chair Cameron, I make a motion, we approve our consent calendar. This morning, we just have one item under Public Works. We receive a hearings officer's decision approving a partition agreement, adjustment, P-A-D-J, excuse me, that seems hard, 16-007 Sadorick, Clerk's File 5715.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. And our first action item this morning is under Finance, consider a second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code, Chapter 3, Dot 2.5. And here she comes. We just, perfect timing, Camber from Finance is here to go through our second reading. I believe we did the first reading, was it last week or two weeks?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Yeah, two weeks ago we did the first reading. So welcome. You have just perfect timing this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and member of the Board. It's 9:05, so good, quick agenda today. Awesome. So I am here before you to, for the second reading of the changes and edits to the Marion County Public Contracting Rules. Would you like me to go through them again or just highlight the areas that we have?
I think the highlights are good because we've seen these in a work session and we've seen them in the first reading, so.
Okay, perfect.
We just want to highlight.
Okay, so we have, basically, we have, due to legislation, we have updated the minority women emerging small business to the Certification Office of Business Inclusion and Diversity, which is also known as COBIT. We've done that throughout the document. We have added that the county contracts officer may waive or permit an offer to correct a minor informality under Section 10-0170, the delegation of authority. We have added some clarification language to Section 20-0430, addenda to solicitation document. We have added some additional exemptions under Section 50. The first one is 0010. We have added some language around acquisitions or disposals of real property. And we've also added contracts for professional or expert witness. We have added a new exemption under Section 50, 0020, which is A&E services for consultants for public works departments. And under Section 50-0200, we did some cleanup of the language and we did some deletion of language because those fall under our procedures. And that is all that we have done for this year.
Great. Any questions or comments?
No, we've been through it all and we've actually approved it once, so it's just a matter of us doing the formality of the second reading.
Great. We'll entertain a motion.
So yeah, Mr. Chair, I would move that the Chair read this ordinance by title only once.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All is in favor of the Chair reading by title only once, signified by saying aye.
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 Chair will read the ordinance. I'm going to read it from the ordinance this time by title.
You're so good.
Because I read it from someplace else and it was wrong last week.
It was just a little bit different.
An ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code, Chapter 3.25. Okay.
And Mr. Chair, I would move that the Board adopt this ordinance amending the Marion County Public Contracting Rules and Marion County Code, Chapter 3.25, as presented.
And I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor of adopting the ordinance, signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, Camber. We are officially done with that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Move on. We thank our legislature for making all those great changes that we could adopt. Next on the list is our Health Department, consider approval of an order appointing Tricia Baxter to the Marion County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council with a term ending August 30th, 2020. And Carrie is here. Good morning. And Rod is here.
Before you this morning is for consideration for appointment to the Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council. We're very fortunate to have Tricia Baxter here this morning, who's applied for the position of advocate on the committee. Tricia brings with her a great deal of experience. She was at the head of the Office of Developmental Disability Services until she retired a few years ago. So we're very, very fortunate and for your consideration for appointment today. Tricia?
Good morning. Carrie sort of said it all. I'm extremely interested in serving Marion County in this way. I did spend 32 years with the state of Oregon in a variety of capacities, but my last 10 years were spent at the Department of Human Services. I did a stint here at Marion County, working with John and Janet and Sam on budget issues, but returned to the state after that year and spent the rest of my career at the Department of Human Services. My last five years there were with the Aging and Disability Programs, and I developed quite a passion for not only the aging programs, but also the programs for individuals experiencing intellectual and developmental disabilities. Now that I'm retired, almost two years now, I'm looking for ways to give back to the community that has given so much to me and look forward to the opportunity to serve Marion County in this volunteer capacity.
Great.
Well, thank you so much for your volunteer service. Wonderful to see you again. Can't believe you're retired? Is this what you're saying? That's amazing. And I've had a brief opportunity to work with this council on the big toy, and they were just a wonderful group of people to work with. I think you'll really enjoy it. It's obviously a very important topic and there's a lot of passion in the group and I think a lot of expertise and knowledge from a lot of different angles, so you'll enjoy it, I'm sure.
Good to see you again, Tricia. Is there something that you really want to accomplish or anything you see here with Marion County that you'll be paying special attention to or?
You know, I think as I looked at things from the state level, I feel like Marion County has a very strong program compared to many other counties in the state. So for me, being someone who wants to see the impact with individuals, I'm currently volunteering with a program in Polk County. It's called Horses Adaptive Riding and Therapy Program. And I see the benefit to the individuals with disabilities that ride there, and it's not just individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, individuals with physical disabilities, as well as our aging population rides there. But seeing the difference that these types of programs can have on individuals, finding a way that we can, as a community, support those activities and provide those opportunities for individuals residing here in Marion County, working with the state to find ways to fund programs that can help individuals live whole lives in the community. I think they tend to have certain activities that we let these people participate in instead of letting them embrace the community as a whole. So one of the things that I would look to do is look at ways we can really engage individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities in the community that they live in and not just in those areas that are carved out for them, but in the whole community.
Great. Rod, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just briefly, I would echo Carrie's word, fortunate. I think Tricia obviously brings a wealth of background, experience, and knowledge. I think what I've been most impressed with over the years is the fact that one person can hold so many facets of a system in their head and then still have, maintain a kind of a problem-solving approach to dealing with issues as they come up in a way that's fair across different jurisdictions, different programs. So I think we're quite fortunate to have Tricia want to return from her retirement of horseback riding and volunteer on this committee.
Great. Tricia, welcome and thank you for your service to Oregon and Marion County in the past, and we really appreciate you stepping up and serving and continuing to serve. And we need more individuals like yourself who are talented and want to come back and serve in a volunteer capacity, so we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chair Cameron, I make a motion that we do approve an order that appoints Tricia Baxter to the Marion County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Council with a term ending August 30th, 2020. Can we get more? I guess that's as long as you can go.
That sounds like a long time away to me, but it's coming quick.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. 2020 it is. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
Could I please take the moment to introduce our new program manager in the Developmental Disability Service, Nick Burton? Where Donna Lisa, after many years, has no longer with us and Nick is here. He comes to us from Lane County, so I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to Nick. We're very fortunate as well to have Nick. He brings a lot of enthusiasm for the work and he's jumped in and done some really incredible things already, so you'll be hearing more from Nick in the months ahead.
When did Nick start?
May 22nd.
Okay. Were you in the new employee orientation when some goofy commissioner said something to you?
I was.
Okay. Welcome. Supposed to remember.
It was probably your week, I'm sure, the way he described it.
Yeah. He acknowledged that right away, didn't he? I set that, set myself up for that. Okay, so with that's done, the next item is still under Health Department and consider approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for $285,658 for alcohol and drug program for access to recovery through April 30th, 2018.
So let me begin. Access to recovery is a bit different from many of the other contracts that you've seen for alcohol and drug services over the years. It is something of a different model. It was really championed by somebody that many of us know, Paul Potter, created Bridgeway here in Marion County a long time ago, worked at the State Office of Mental Health and Addictions for quite some time. And also something that Aaron Wheeler, who is still with the Oregon Health Authority as the mental health and alcohol and drug person, really champions. And this is to recognize that while the treatment services that we have for alcohol and drug treatment are great, there's more to recovery than just going to treatment, getting clean and sober, going to group. There are a lot of very individualized needs that people have to help with their recovery over the years. So what access to recovery does is it's a voucher system that allows payment for some of those services that are kind of outside of what Bridgeway and Marion County do in terms of treatment services. So it's funding for things like pastoral counseling, parent education, those kinds of things that actually are supports for people's recovery. So this is additional funding for what we do, and it creates basically a recovery management center that is with the county and then basically pays for services that people need, very focused on personal choice. So it's very person-directed in terms of people saying, here's what I need for my own recovery. Of course, there's an assessment that says, yeah, does that seem reasonable? But it's really driven by where the person feels that they need the help. And then basically through the state's voucher system, payment is made to the people that actually, the agencies that actually deliver that services, which would by and large not be the county. And Carrie?
So the program is a link for people who are reentering the community. So there's some basic criteria. People need to be newly in recovery, no greater than six months. And it's a transitional support service of people who are returning to the community from drug and alcohol residential treatment or the prison systems with some priority populations of youth between 18 and 25, that transition age youth population, who we know need some pretty intensive supports to make a successful transition to adulthood, target for veterans, and parents who are involved in the child welfare system. So as Rod is describing, it really allows us to garner additional supports to people who we wouldn't otherwise be providing through a Medicaid service. So transportation, that we can provide some housing supports for people, very short-term, 30 days, basic needs, help people get clothing for employment. So really that additional support services to get people on the right track as they're just entering into their recovery.
Questions?
Well, I'm just trying to do quick math, but it doesn't look like $285,000 would go very far over the population that you've described, but I assume it helps.
The money is intended to serve at least 198 people, and it's built on a sort of a case rate formula of $1,400 per person. So this is in addition to the other treatment supports. It's been active in Multnomah, Lane, Clackamas Counties for a while, and one of the primary barriers for people to get to treatment is transportation and some of those basic needs, like I was saying, clothing to get to a job and things. So it's really intended to sort of bolster those kinds of supports. And yes, at about $1,400 an individual.
Okay. Thank you. So I do have a question because it mentions reentry in here a couple times and maybe Commissioner Carlson knows a little bit more about this, but you said it's within the first six months of treatment, so somebody, is this reentry for somebody coming out of DOC? Maybe been, because obviously they've been in there for more than a year, but they were in treatment maybe while they were there? I mean, how does that work from a reentry standpoint or is it some people coming out of Marion County jail?
It could be either, prison or jail, or a residential drug and alcohol treatment program, but it's six months of community reintegration of recovery. So it's both of those things, in the community, returning to the community, and within six months of their sobriety. So because people are in institutions, they're, the time period starts when they reenter the community.
Clicks when they're out. Okay, great. Want to make any comments about?
Well, no, I just got to have a question. So this is a three-year SAMSA grant, federal grant, and so generally in a SAMSA grant, they have kind of a sustainability plan? Is it just, we get this for three years and then it's gone and gee, that was nice? Or are we a pilot for some type of a thing where then we're tracking outcomes and making a case to the legislature or someone else that we need to continue this type of service? Can you maybe help us understand that?
As part of the access to recovery, there is a requirement around outcomes monitoring and tracking. The funds are intended just through the...
April of 18.
April of 18.
Right.
Or June of 18. So we're hoping for some sustainability, that they'll refund the program, but we don't know at this point.
Okay.
So the initial phase of the grant was rolled out in the metro counties and it's being expanded at that time. That's why we don't have the full three years left on the funding here.
So has there been any discussion, I guess, at the state level about what the future looks like for the money or?
I think the folks who have been championing it at the Oregon Health Authority are very interested in seeing this continue. It's had some traction in other communities outside of Oregon. It is one of those things that really improves the chances for maintaining recovery. And I think, you know, I think there are a lot of opportunities here for us to do some good things over the next year and a half, too, that will help the state make the case for continued funding, but it's not guaranteed past that grant.
Well, I'm just thinking the East program that started out with a grant ended up going statewide because we demonstrated that it was so successful. But you would probably need to be able to demonstrate that by having these basic needs, people were more likely to remain in treatment, be successful, those kinds of things. So is that the type of thing that they're having you track?
Yes, as well as a six-month follow-up outside of, once they discharge from the program, to see about their sustaining their recovery.
Okay, good. But the types of things you can use it on are really person-centered, right? So you're, so it could be one thing for one person and two other things for someone else.
It's wraparound.
So that's the trickiness of collecting outcomes because you're not using the same method for each person.
Very interesting, yes.
Okay, well, I'd be, keep us informed as we move along on how it's going because I think we could be advocates for this if you see that it's making a big difference. At least I would like to do that.
Well, yeah, and especially with the discussion we had with the sheriff in our Community Corrections Board about some of the changes in direction on getting people earlier into recovery and out of jail. It's great to see a program that doesn't say every human being needs the same thing. Thank you. Okay. I think we need a motion, right?
All right. So I think it's my turn. Is that right?
Yep.
So I would move approval of the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Health Authority for $285,658 for the alcohol and drug program access to recovery through April 30th, 2018.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thank you very much.
We'll come back as we, as we get some information.
Appreciate all you do for our citizens. Completes our formal business today. I'll read the calendar. We are here in the Senate Hearing Room.
Senator.
Senator, Senator Hearing Room.
Like the Senator Hotel.
Senator Hotel Hearing Room, I'll just say. Okay. Wonder what happened in this room before it was built. Okay, it's noon today. We will be at the Woodburn Marion County Meeting, our monthly meeting. Location at Luisa's Taqueria at 523 Front Street, Woodburn. Later on this afternoon, we have an executive session from 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor. I'll just pause while John interrupts everybody. No, teasing him. Okay, and then tomorrow, on Thursday, at 7:30, we have Kaiser Marion County Monthly Meeting at Sherry's Restaurant, 4998 River Road North, Kaiser. Thursday, 9:30 to 10:30, work session here in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor, strengthening Hispanic-Latino families. 9:08, excuse me, also tomorrow, Thursday, 9:08 at 2:00 p.m., Mid-Wilamette House, Homeless Initiative Support Services Education Subcommittee, location in the Salem Conference, Salem Conference Room here on the first floor, 555 Court Street Northeast, Salem. Okay. On Friday, the 9th, at 9:00 a.m., SOAR graduation, Shemecata Community College Building 6, 4,000 Lancaster Drive, Northeast Salem. Are you going to that, Commissioner?
I am the speaker this time.
Okay, good. I'm just probably going to, if I go, I'm going to just listen to all the wisdom.
You took my place the last time and did a fabulous job, I heard, so I have to live up to that.
Okay. Well, I'm just going to go learn from you. On 9/12 Monday at 8:00 a.m., Association of Oregon County Steering Legislative Committee and Board Meeting, local government center, 1201 Court Street Northeast Salem. On 9/12 Monday at noon, Mid-Wilamette Homeless Initiative Health and Housing Subcommittee, location Wilamette Valley Community Health Offices, 2965 Ryan Drive, Salem. 9:13 Tuesday at 7:30 a.m., Stateon Marion County Meeting, location Covered Bridge Cafe, 510 North Third in Stateon. On 9/13 Tuesday, 9:30 a.m., a work session on Zone Code Amendment, Merrill Wana Businesses, location Silverton Conference Room here on the fifth floor. On 9/13 Tuesday at 1:30, Marion County Reentry Council Quarterly Meeting, location Commissioner's Board Room here on the fifth floor. On 9/13 Tuesday, 4:00 p.m., Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council, location in the Commissioner's Board Room here on the fifth floor. 9:14 Wednesday, we're back here for a board session in the Senator Hearing Room. See, it's on this. Okay? I'll have to remember that. Yeah. And then on 9/14 Wednesday, 2:30 p.m., Governor's Reentry Council Meeting at the Department of Public Safety and Standards on 4190 Almsville Highway. And Wednesday, 9:14, 3:00 p.m., Economic Development Advisory Board Meeting, location is at Columbia Helicopters is at Columbia Helicopters at 14452 Arnt Road Northeast in Aurora. Okay, it seems like that calendar just got busy. Went from less than a page to two pages.
Welcome to September. Got behind school buses this morning. It was like, oh, yeah, school's in session again.
It's interesting you said that because I was going to work out this morning, and I left my house at 6:15, and there was kids standing out waiting for the bus, and I went by Sprague High School, and they were standing out at, you know, 6:20, standing out at the school, almost in the dark.
Yeah.
I mean, they're really going early.
Yep.
Can we still do a little bit of work?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And this isn't on the agenda, but we haven't been having management update, and usually that's, and I guess I was gone, so that's my fault, but I noticed we don't have one for Monday again. And normally, that's a chance where we get to catch up on things that are going on that might be of interest to the rest of them. I've got on a committee, the one it's having to do with targeting emissions for climate change, and I told our, I asked our SCATS committee if I could be their representative with the idea that I'm not in favor of it, and it's, somebody needs to be there to keep them honest. And actually, they're not very happy with me, and that's fine, but the first thing I told them was I'm here to make sure that whatever you come up with isn't onerous and it's effective. And I said, I don't think that's possible, so that's a nice way to introduce yourself. But they have two ideas that have me very concerned right now, and the first has to do with, they understand, an MPO is a federal designation showing certain populations, doesn't care about city, county lines, it just says this group is an MPO. Portland's one, Salem, Eugene, Medford, I believe, and I think Bend, but...
Isn't Jefferson in Albany?
Right, Albany has one that Jefferson's included in.
They're in Albany, yes. Because I was down at their city council and they were talking about...
Right, I told them not to join it, but they didn't listen to me.
Right.
So, the problem is that like here in our SCATS group, we have like a half dozen different cities, Salem, Kaiser, Marion County, Polk County, Transit, Turner, there may be some others. So, the problem is that they're trying to figure out ways that they can compel individual governments to accept their findings and make these changes. And the first one is an expansion of regional government to give them authority. So, basically, you would have like our SCATS committee appointed non-elected, just people representing each entity with the power to dictate the counties and cities that they must follow this. And so, on that one, I told them, look, you do that, you even try to bring that up, and every rural county in Oregon will rise up against it and make sure that doesn't happen. And I said, and if you're thinking about expanding metro, now we got a real issue. And the second was there's targets, it's artificial targets that they made up. Portland wanted to have a more aggressive target, so the question last meeting was, should we adopt Portland's target statewide, or...
This reminds me of Solid Waste somehow.
Yeah, it is. Or have different targets, smaller target for the rest of the state, or kind of negotiate individually with each MPO. So, I...
So, are the targets just for show, like the ones in Solid Waste, or would they have a requirement and there'd be some penalty if you didn't meet the target? What are they thinking?
Well, that's how it starts, same as DEQ did with...
Aspirational targets.
Say, here's your target, and then they're not met. Isn't that something? So, now we have to put teeth in.
So, if you have like a really, like the metro area has a low target, but then they don't meet it, they get credit for having at least wanted to have a really great...
Then the third is what I call a compulsion thing, where if you want to have your traffic plans approved, what you need to get dollars and organization stuff, you have to sign on that we will agree to and follow. California did something like this. So, if you want your plan approved, you have to accept their climate change theory and reactions, and that's the other way of getting teeth in. I just find it very disturbing, and especially the regional government idea is something we want to watch real close.
So, how many other votes do you have on this committee?
It's just me. They all, that was the last thing they talked about, said, now, we are a, oh, wait, I forget the term, where everybody agrees.
Consensus.
Consensus group, but we don't have to be, said, so that accounts for me. So, anyway, I just thought you might be interested if it comes up. I think we'd want to ask AOC and others to at least be aware and respond if they think necessary, but I find it just horribly...
Who does the committee report to?
It's DLCD and authorization from the legislature to find ways to get us out of our cars. And of course, there's only, the only ways you get people out of cars are by making it expensive to drive, no parking, just the opposite. I know that's the other group, but I don't think DLCD has any right to be there. They shouldn't. For transportation, it should be to make it as easy to drive as possible, as cheap and safe. Instead, this is to hinder driving.
Well, does it advise them on rulemaking with regard to the law? Is that what it is?
Well, they've come up with these techniques, and the next step with the legislature would be to approve their findings.
Okay, so it goes back to the legislature before it goes back to the agency?
It's a recommendation, yeah.
Okay, great.
Anyway, a lot of fun.
All righty. Well, thanks for letting us know.
And then I don't really know where I think, and I'm also on the Salem Water Committee, so if you have questions, we can talk about that some other time.
How'd you end up there?
I've been their representative for the county.
All right, when Patty was on it, and then Sam took it when she left.
Wow.
They're doing good work. It all makes good sense. The controversial subject is Creekside and...
It's not just Creekside.
Well, I know.
They're going to cover it all. There's more to the story than...
Didn't apply to Salem, so I felt pretty much it isn't my question, but...
It's the irrigator rate.
Irrigator rate.
Yeah.
That's all. Otherwise, I've had a lot of fun elk hunting, caught a few fish. I love the fall.
Tricia and I are working on invitations to the breakfast on October 21st.
I saw that.
That's been a little bit overwhelming, but, yeah, so you're going to have to let me know exactly how many people. Yeah, right, I was just like, wow, we're getting close. So, it's only September, and we're getting close to the 192 mark, which is great. Great problem to have.
So, I guess Regional Solutions, as you know, since James LaBarre's been there, has really done some really...
He's everywhere, by the way.
Yeah, just really impressed that he's not only showing up, but he gets things done. He actually, in fact, I just opened up my email, he actually is getting for these permits for the marinas, you know, I think you knew I'm working on that with the...
Detroit.
Army Corps and Regional Solutions. He's actually putting a meeting together up at DEQ's Portland office that will include every state agency, every federal agency that wants to have any say-so over these permits and get them all in the room and say, here, here's what they're trying to do, speak up or, you know, basically get out in front of this thing and say what the issues are. So, that's going to happen on September 21st, so some things are still moving forward up there to help with that. Yeah, moving along. And I think you saw in the schedule, we're having a EDA meeting up at the Aurora Airport, trying to get them to see bigger, some of the bigger assets that we have in Marion County, some of the growth that's going on up there at the airport, so that's encouraging. What else is going on? Anything else?
Lot of things going on.
Yeah.
My life is mostly now public safety, mental health, and healthcare generally, so...
All right. So, if nothing else to talk about, we can adjourn this meeting and get ready to go have Mexican food at whatever time. That is 11:30. We are adjourned.